Alright, so a pleasant afternoon everyone. Let me on behalf of the veterinary council, the president and the veterinary council board, and most importantly also for this meeting, the provost of the veterinary college, college of veterinary surgeons to welcome everyone of us to this wonderful afternoon, where we are going to be sharing light on what the college is about, the ongoing registration process and what you need to do. The reason for this meeting from the veterinary council was loads of questions I was getting from people when we shared the college adverts. People were asking quite a handful of questions, some I could answer, some I forwarded to the veterinary council, some I forwarded to the provost to answer. But in the very good twist of events, the provost encouraged that we have a specialized town hall meetings where people can come with their questions and then he can answer them directly. And that's why we are having this meeting today. Without wasting so much time, as I said initially at the beginning, that we are fortunate to have the president of the veterinary council. I've not seen someone with this level of passion for the profession. I'm aware that she has been away from the country and she only came in last night. I wanted to bother her about this meeting so that she can make like appearance briefly. But I was also concerned that she came in pretty very late last night and it might be a time for her to rest. But as we all know, she's a policewoman and then she's able to cope with all the twists and turns that the profession throws at her. And amazingly, she has led the council to so much tremendous progress that we are all proud of. So before ushering in the provost of the college, I want to welcome the president of the veterinary council, AIG Aisha Tawbaka Badju. Please say backend, can you help us spotlight her? Let her take the stage and welcome us all before we go into the meat of why we are here this afternoon. President Ma, backend, please can you, if you don't mind, turn on your video so that we can see you and then we can also hear you most appropriately before we usher in the provost of the college. The president Ma. Can you please make her co-host if she's not the co-host? Okay, I think she's co-host, so she can, Ma, you can unmute and also share your video so that we can see you. If you need some time, we can also make an adjustment towards that. But we just had a conversation with you now and I know you are hearing. Except if something has happened and then we cannot have you. Will you want us to proceed or we should wait a moment for you? The president of the council. Alright, so if we cannot get her clearly to come on board, by the time she said, I think we'll just have a little interruption to get her in and then we'll continue. So I think we should just, we'll just go directly, is the registrar of the council also here?
Okay, Femi, you wanted me to speak.
Exactly, Ma. To give the introduction. Oh, no, no, it's fine, it's fine, Ma. So if you could, do mind, turn on your video. Brilliant. Yes, backend, can you please spotlight her? I think I can do that myself. Good.
I have just spoken with the, with the registrar of council, he's in one meeting, but I've asked him to also take time out and join this meeting. So do you want, do you want us to wait for him or you want us to just?
No, no, we'll just proceed. We almost have a hundred people in the room. The provost has already said, so we just want an introduction from you and of course to share your vision regarding the college and the restructuring that's happened. Then we'll go fully into what the provost asked for us and we'll start answering loads of questions that the people want to know, people want to join the college. They want to know the application process, they want to know if, if they are not in the country, how can they join? They want to know lots of things around the college and it's a good time to share those lights since we have him around. So over to you, the president, let's get an introduction from you, Ma.
Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Femi. The, the, the provost of the college, Professor Hassan Zouaka, my lecturer and my mentor, and all the respected members of the profession on board, I don't want to go through. There's, I was just trying to see those that are online, but I want to say good afternoon to every one of you. Actually, I just came back from a journey and I saw this meeting that is going to happen and I made sure that I put an alarm on it so that it could remind me, that's why I joined before two o'clock. Just to make sure that I don't miss out on this meeting because I'm very, very passionate about the College of Veterinary Surgeons and what's happening there. So I want to say welcome on behalf of the board, I want to welcome each and everyone on this, on this webinar and to congratulate Professor Hassan and his team for the job well done. In fact, I kept saying that since the inauguration of the IMC, the college IMC, I have, is sleeping with my eyes closed because I know that it is being handed over to a team that will definitely bring that revolution into the College of Veterinary Surgeons that we are dreaming of. It has been one of the major roadmap for the council, it's among the top ones as the restructuring of the College of Veterinary Surgeons and we are happy that the team has actually understood and is really working in line with the aspiration of the entire board and, and, and the, and the veterinary community. So I want to congratulate you and say well done for, for all that you have been doing. Please, for those that have questions, I know that they are capable to answer all those questions that you want answered and also tell, tell others, those that I know here, how we have changed the face of the College of Veterinary Surgeons. I'm happy about the transformation, but board members are happy about the transformation going on in college. We are not there yet, but we are on the right track, making sure that the college is meeting up to its own vision and mission. So I wish each and everyone was also very wonderful and fruitful deliberation and congratulation of Professor Hassan and your team. We are indeed very, very proud of what you're doing. Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you so much, Madame Capacity. Thank you so much for, you know, for your inspiring comment. And then of course, as you know very clearly, that some of us wants to be like you when we grow up and we can only.
You have not registered in the college and I'm not happy. I want to say that in public space, I've asked you to register in the college, you have not registered.
So it's part of the question, it's part of the question I want to ask Professor Zouaka, that will veterinary entrepreneurship be part of the college? So that some of us that has taken the path of entrepreneurship will be welcome. Alright, so Madame Capacity, we will, we will, we will ask him, there are loads of questions for the, for the provost. So without wasting so much time, but.
He is very comfortable answering all your questions, I'm very much sure of that.
Yes, yes, he seems, he seems so, Ma, he seems very confident. And fortunately for us, we have over a hundred people. That shows how people want to listen. We received loads of questions and that was what sparked this agreed town hall meeting with the provost. So provost, I believe you're set, we will give you, say, twenty minutes, fifteen to twenty minutes to share what it is the college is about and what thematic area there exists in the college. What your vision is, what changes you've got. Why should we, as the president has just encouraged me openly now to register? Should young vets come in? What are the benefits? What are the downsides? How long will it take? What timeline do we use to finish so many questions? Once we're done with this, we will now go into the Q and A for another forty-five minutes, then we'll call it a good time. So Professor Hassan Zouaka, provost of the College of the Veterinary Surgeon, we want to welcome you. Thank you so much for attending and then over to you now, sir.
Thank you very much, Dr. Femi. I hope I'm audible enough.
Yes, you're very audible, sir.
Hi, we had. Thank you very much, Dr. Femi. I think I will start by extending my salutations to the president of the Veterinary Council of Nigeria, who took the pace to be, to attend this particular town hall meeting, or interaction, if I may use that word. Other colleagues who are on board, I think I saw, but I'm seeing about a hundred and thirty-eight, which is quite impressive and exciting for me because even when Dr. Femi told me, I wasn't really expecting this sort of number turning up. So I'm amazed that I take off, we're already having a hundred and forty people or colleagues on board, which meant before the end of it, we might be hitting about two hundred or thereabouts. But be that as it may, the College of Vet Surgeons Nigeria was established primarily to enhance the quality of training of veterinarians at the post-graduation level. He said too, what we have are simply masters and PhD degrees after graduation. Now, it was observed over time that the masters and PhDs do not make you a better practitioner. What they simply achieve is to make you a researcher. And as we know from our own human colleagues, where the emphasis is the other way around. It's about the fellowship, it's about being a consultant, whereas the MScs and the PhDs are generally downplayed. In the veterinary sphere, the reverse seemed to be the case. So somewhere earlier, around twenty ten, I think twenty ten, twenty eleven, the idea was muted that there is the need to have a postgraduate professional training school for veterinarians who are in practice and that there is the need to develop the consultancy kind of because he said to, when we refer to you as a consultant, it's simply that you are a senior lecturer and above in the university system. But we know that is wrong. It should be based on having acquired a qualification that qualifies you to be referred to as a consultant. So the college came into being around twenty ten, twenty eleven. By twenty twelve, I think activities have started. Now, at that time, the college essentially consists of the congregation, the senate comprising of sixteen individuals and then we had the provost. I think we started with Professor Okon, later Professor Umar took over from Professor Okon. And unfortunately, if I may use that word, that ex-coastal state for really long and I think things stagnated somewhere in twenty nineteen. Activities of the college, I think following several complaints by several, you know, residents as well as non-residents necessitated session of college activities in twenty nine. And the veterinary council was also in the process of ensuring that it re-energizes a lot of its own function. So the college happens to be one of those areas where the council felt it needed to be re-energized. A committee was put in place headed by Professor JD Amin, the former vice chancellor of the University of Meduguri. The committee met several times. Suggestions were sought for from different individuals who contributed. And at the end of it, the committee came up with a report that was forwarded to the veterinary council. The council now in its own wisdom decided to set up an interim management committee with me as the chairman of that committee. And we had essentially a five-point mandate. Number one was to reposition the college, to make it a world-class institution, comparable to any, anywhere in the world. The second mandate is the decentralization of the study centers of the college. He said too, we only had four study centers, the Amad Bello University, University of Nigeria Onsuka, the University of Ibadan, as well as the National Veterinary Research Institute in Vom, when it came in later. Initially, there were three, Vom came in later to make it four. The third mandate is the digitalization or the adoption of e-learning for the purpose of instruction. And then the fourth is that we should re-emphasize or change the focus of the trading from being more theoretical to becoming a more clinic or practical oriented training, which is what the fellowship program is supposed to be. And then lastly, to also see to passing of the college bill. These were essentially the five key mandates who were given at inception in twenty twenty-two by the Veterinary Council of Nigeria. Now, let me say one or two things about these various mandates and where we are as far as they are affected at the moment. Repositioning the college, this would be an aggregate of every other activity that we're doing. But basically, what we've tried to do is to start repositioning any institution anywhere, you first have to be visible. People need to know that you exist. So we started off by now establishing or setting up having a website. Because when you do have a website, then it's possible for other individuals to see you and know that you exist. We are currently in the process of populating that website, we're putting in a lot more information. Now that we are virtually through with the development of the student handbook, we are going to use most of the information in the handbook to populate the website. So we believe that within the next one month or so, we're going to have a very robust website with calendars telling you our events over the years, et cetera, et cetera. So it's going to be a very robust website, we assure you it's not going to be a poster. It's going to be a website that will be changing everywhere to reflect the activities of the college. So that is one key thing we've done in repositioning the college, getting other people to know we exist. So we can tell people that, yeah, we are there. Check this website and you're going to see everything you want to know about us. You're going to see the leaders there, you're going to the mandate of the college, et cetera, et cetera, you're going to see everything. Secondly, decentralization of the study centers. The last, the, the committee that worked on restructuring the college also looked at this as a bit of a problem that has militated against participation of several individuals in college activities. And this situation is even worse now with the insecurity around. People ordinarily don't want to travel except if they must. And so getting the study centers closer to where individuals are was judged to be something very, very useful by that committee. So they recommended it. In line with that, when we came on board, there were four study centers. We've now added four additional study centers to it. The University of Meduguri is now a study center. Usmanam Fodio University is a study center, the University of Abuja is a study center, as well as the University of Joss. We are working on having a study center in the south-south geopolitical zone. But the only veterinary school we have over there, the University of Benin, clearly indicated to us that they are not yet ready. They are premature to be able to get this going. So for now, we have eight study centers. So we've decentralized it, we've taken it a bit closer to where people are. But creating additional study centers is a continuous process. As we move along, additional institutions where the media requirement will request for will assess them and then if verified, they will be made study centers. To move along, it's our hope in the not-too-distant future virtual, but in every, in the not-too-long, even some private practices, just so you have the facility and the positive for studies centers isn't there. Well, who every year, because what we're essentially doing is that we are parasiting on what the veterinary teaching hospitals have for their undergraduate students. But we feel that is not good enough, there are additional facilities that are required for postgraduate training. And the college will have to come in and see how it's going to support the study centers to acquire or to maintain some of these facilities. So we believe that once we have some incentive going, we're going to have a rush on institutions wanting to become study centers. Now that the incentives are not there, we'll have a little bit of food dragging, but we think it will be a thing of the past sooner than later. Then we have the digitization, we're also reasonably moved in this direction. The committee advocated that instead of narrowing lectures to about four months on campus and we know the problems with the lectures, most of the students actually do not participate the way they ought to. Because what has been happening is that people still simply moonlight, what I will call moonlighting. You have the residents just showing up their face for one or two days and then disappearing for one or two weeks and they showing up their face again. The lectures were never really being thoroughly thought the way they ought to. And I think that committee looked at all these factors and decided that, and to prevent people from moving up and down again, it was decided that why we should adopt, you know, online lectures, we've done that. Last year, we started off by using the Teams platform and we thank God. Initially, there were some hiccups, which is normal with anything new. But later on, I think we got it in the second semester and it went on smoothly. This time around, we've added the Zoom platform to it. So what it meant is that each faculty will now have a Zoom and a Teams platform for its own delivery. Different faculties had liberty to decide on how they're going to use it. But most of the faculties have decided to split the number of options that they have so that they have about two, three options on one platform and then two, three on the other platform. So we're going to run the two. The implication of this is that we will now double the time that was available for lectures compared to last year. Because if we had only a single platform to a faculty, what it meant is that that faculty has to share that platform. Now that you have two platforms, it meant we can now double the time allocated for our lectures. Because it meant lectures can be going on on the Zoom platform and concurrently begin on the Teams platform without any. In addition to that, now this time around, I said, we're now having both Zoom and Teams. And then there's an additional special, you know, group class that is on our learning management system. I'll be talking about the learning management system later. And this is going to be reserved as a special interaction classroom. And our intentions are that we're going to share it out to the various, you know, faculties. On Monday, medicine will be responsible for its use. On Tuesday, it's going to be with pathology, on Wednesday, public health, on Thursday, it's going to be surgery. So it's going to run this way. Whenever any of these faculties has anything special that it wants all its students to view, we're going to have it shared on that platform. So it's possible that in Zaria, we could have a surgical case that is a rare procedure that others have never seen or probably will never see. So what we'll do is we'll now share.
So, I don't know, Croft. Croft, we, we can't hear anything, don't know what went wrong. Croft. So backend, is it just me? Can we hear something? Looks like Croft is having a little technical issue. Okay, no audio, okay, so it's not just me. I think we could just get him to probably. Hello, Croft. We, Croft, we cannot hear you, sir. Hello, Croft. If you can hear me, can you just say you can hear me but no, not from, not Croft? Hello, Croft, can you hear? Alright, so you can hear me, fantastic. Croft, I, I think he cannot also hear us because he just kept on talking and somebody will need to help me draw Croft's attention. Maybe I should call him because he's still talking and then he can't seem to hear us. That's funny. Just a moment so that I can hear, I can call him and draw his attention to the fact that we cannot hear him. Alright, so he isn't picking my call, somebody around him needs to draw his attention to. What do we do now? He isn't picking my call. Croft, can you hear us? Croft. So please, are we exiting from the meeting so that he can? So that I can force him, I can get his attention and by exiting him from the meeting, then he can re-log in and be able to, please permit me to quickly exit him, it won't take a whole lot of time. Backend, can you please exit? Croft, can you hear us? We cannot hear you. Backend, please can you exit, exit him so that we can have him re-log in, once we exit him, we can have him re-log in. I have tried to call him also, but he's not there. So alright, so Dr. Padipe, are you in a comfortable place to talk so that I can bring you up while I attend to Croft's Yes, we know he will have to go back a little bit because we cannot hear him. So we'll let him know where we stop hearing him, but I'm just wondering what what, backend, please can you exit, Croft? Since we cannot get his attention otherwise. Fantastic. Alright, so now that we have exited him, but we need the, Dr. Padipe, are you in a good place to talk? So that we can ask you to be unmuted.
Hello.
Alright, fantastic. Can you, if you don't mind, turn on your video, I don't know how you could keep engaging us. But we need to talk to re-log in and then, then we can take it off from there. Dr. Padipe is our acting registrar of the council and also a longstanding member. He used to be, took the position for a long time, the college, this college secretary for quite a handful of time. But we just forcefully exited Croft and then we're trying to get him back so that we can have him on almost two hundred people in the call already. So you want to share with us the application process for the college? Why we get Croft to be on board? Go ahead, Dr. Padipe.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Let me start by acknowledging the presence of the president of the council, AIG Aisha Tawbaka Badju, and every other distinguished board members, including Dr. Femi, who is our anchor for today. And let me also say a very warm good afternoon to the provost, my mentor, my supervisor, even up to my postgraduate level. The issue of educating the public about the application into the college is actually a very good thing and it's calling me right on time because the college had advertised for people to apply so that they could undergo the training. And one thing that is very important that everyone should know now is that we are now in a digital era, meaning that the application is now online. And as such, what anyone needs to do to be admitted now is for him or her to go online and apply. Those processes are there, I will not be able to go through them because I'm not the technical expert in that. And in case there are issues why people are trying to apply online. We have our technical people that who attend to them. You know, but it's for people to go online uh. And apply to whatever uh segment of the training that they want. And uh, once the application is made, the payment is also made. The uh form will be sent to the various head of faculties. Who we uh give the qualified ones the admission. And then of course, uh, they will get the admission letter in their email. They can download it and then of course the other processes we follow. So I think it's a good thing that we don't have to be sending a copy of our papers. Uh, a form all over the place like we used to do before. Now seamlessly you can just go online and upload all that is required. Uh, to be able to get admitted. And uh, the admission was advertised in the dailies. And uh, all across the social media. So all the admission requirements are there. Uh, for us to be able to know whether we're eligible or not. Uh, so I think with that, uh, if uh. That answers the uh, the two contribution I was to make. Uh, let me turn in the mic to Doctor Fermin. And if you need one or two more clarification from my end, I can do, I can do that. Thank you very much, Doctor Fermin.
Alright, thank you, uh, Doctor Fadipe for coming in quickly. So I, I think we can start taking some questions while we try to get Croft back on board. Uh, so I think because we removed him, Zoom is saying that he cannot come back on board. So we're trying to get him to use another uh device to come on board. Alright, so let's uh. Uh, can we pick questions? Okay, so uh, somebody is asking, what's, where's, where's the link for the application?
Okay, the, the link for the application is uh. Already on the, on WhatsApp and uh all social media, but we can share it.
Yes, if you can share it with me, I can easily pick that up and share it on the chat.
Okay, so let, let, let me quickly go to WhatsApp and bring the link up on the message box.
Alright, then I'm going to, I see some people raising up their hands. Let me unmute, ask to unmute someone. Uh, that's uh, uh, Doctor Yomi Onu, Oni Lude. Please, can you quickly ask your question?
Yes, um, good afternoon. I, Croft was here.
Hey, he's trying to come back, but if you want to suspend your question till when he, he comes on board, we can easily do that. Do you, will you want me to take another person?
Maybe you should, maybe you should, because mine is more than a question, is a bitter complaint. So maybe you should take someone else.
Yes, yes, we can. Yes, we will do that now. Okay, so I think Croft is back. Uh, Croft is back. So we will just uh ask him to start his video and conclude his presentation. I see a lot of hands up. I see a lot of questions also. Uh, so but let's conclude with Croft if you, we don't mind. And then uh, we can, we can take the questions. There are forty-five minutes time for question and answer. Croft, welcome back, sir. Apologies, we could not hear you.
Sorry about it. I think I just, I just realized that I was taken off. I, I think let me just try to rush through. And uh, so uh, other issues could be taken up during the question and answer sessions.
Go ahead.
Am I audible, please?
Yes, loud and clear, Croft.
Alright, thank you. Uh, I was, uh, I had earlier on given the rundown on what the mandate is and where we are at the moment. I think I was thinking of the digitization when the whole thing went off. And I said the digitization involved, you know, using Teams and Zooms for lecture delivery. Uh, we now have a website, we have a portal system that coordinates our application process, registration process, fee paying uh systems. Uh, et cetera. And then we have a learning management system. So after you are through with this. Uh, you are migrated to the learning management system. Where we have an e-library, where we're going to be uploading our content. Where you can print out a transcript, you can print out your examination uh, regi-. Relation slip that will allow you in and out of exams, et cetera. So we're going to do, so we have that already running. And we already also have a customized YouTube channel where we are going to be storing lectures, after lectures. Uh, so that individuals who miss our lectures can still catch on. So we are going e-learning all the way, basically. Uh, on the content, which is part of what should be on the LMS. Uh, we're trying to source for some funding that will assist us to develop our notes into courseware. Because courseware is what we use uh for the purpose of online, you know, lectures. Go to raise some funds and do that. Then the next issue has to do with uh clinics and prioritizing clinics. Uh, what we have done is instead of the four months that we initially uh were having for clinics, which as I mentioned earlier. Was never fully been done because hardly will any student come in and stay for four months. Uh, a lot of people had jobs uh to go back to and they didn't want to jeopardize their jobs. And we have, we, we, we have to, you know, accept those realities. And so what we've done is we now have additional study centers and clinics will now run for two semesters. So we now have the whole system running like a proper institution. Semester one and semester two. Each of these semesters is for twelve weeks. So we now have twelve weeks of clinics in semester one, twelve weeks of clinics in semester two. Every resident is expected to put in a minimum of sixteen hours weekly for the twelve weeks. In addition to this, in October, we have a one-month residency on campus. During the one-month residency on campus, specialized techniques and procedures that we are not likely to see. During the attachment or during our normal clinics will now be the emphasis of the training. Uh, by tomorrow, hopefully, the revised or the final version of the handbooks will be out. So in these handbooks, you will see a listing of all the procedures that you are supposed to learn. And you are going to be examined based on these procedures. So residents are duty bound to ensure that they learn how to perform all those procedures that are listed in their corresponding specialties. Uh, with that, I think uh, and at the same time again. Every month, there's going to be a seminar, a virtual seminar session. Every resident will be expected to make a seminar presentation every month detailing his activities for that month, his clinical engagement for that month. So we need to know what we are doing and it's going to be virtual. So all the instructors all over the federation will be listening in. And they will be free to ask questions and criticize what you've done. So we'll be expecting that every month. Uh, the last uh issue over there as part of our mandate is the college bill. Uh, hopefully and thankfully, uh, the ministry has made it its mandate and it has taken off, you know, the issue of the college bill. So we are hopeful that uh, uh, with our two ministers having been just uh. Uh, from the National Assembly themselves, uh, we believe that they know the workings of the National Assembly and that within the not-too-distant future. Uh, the college bill will go through that will grant the college the autonomy to be able to grow. And to be able to render its functions effectively or better than what we are now doing. But as I said earlier, we are not yet there, as the president said. It's a growth process. We thought in one, two years we would be able to hit it. Uh, but we realized that uh, we just have to take things a little bit more gradual. Crashing everything overnight and not carrying people along will amount to nothing. Even if we end up implementing these things and were unable to carry other people along, then we may not have achieved what we wanted to achieve. Now, let me just get straight to twenty twenty-four. Uh, as I said, we now have a portal system. So anybody who intends to uh be a resident simply goes onto the portal. Will we advertise, as I said immediately after the presentation, will we advertise the portal address? So you simply go in there, you see the whole set of instructions. Uh, you just generate your basic information uh by the form. Uh, once it's been certified, it will migrate you to the admission, you know, uh, portal. The head of faculty will be there to check you. Once he admits you, it will auto generate an admission letter for you. And send the admission letter to your email automatically. Once you get that, you pay your school fee. Once you pay your school fee, it will migrate you to the LMS. So you'll be able to access the LMS, our e-library, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, so that's how the system uh functions. So everything is now automated, automated and integrated. Of course, this is the very first year. We expect hiccups here and there. It's normal with every new system. But we believe that before long, we'll be able to get, you know, the whole system running effectively with no uh, hiccups. So that's how the uh, application process is going to be. I've talked about the learning management system. Uh, now, as I said, with the content, what we're trying to do is that uh. The world over, uh, in the language of instruction, or let me say in teaching. Uh, it's no longer what it used to be. There's now a realization that different people learn differently. And that brings us to the concept of what we call uh, uh, learning, learning skills. Different people learn differently. Uh, there are those who refer to as the auditory learners. These are people who learn by listening. There are the audio, the visual learners. People who learn by watching videos and things like that. We have the read and write. So it's now being understood that not everybody learns the same way. So what we're doing, what we're going to do with our courseware is that we're going to produce it. Well, this audio versions of the courseware. So for individuals who don't want to read. They can simply plug this in their phone, put an earphone and just listen to all the content and everything else. Then we're also going to have our own tutors develop videos again. So for people who learn better by watching videos or the multimedia, they will also have that opportunity. So we're going to develop different, you know, forms of the content. So that you can choose whichever form appeals to you uh better. And then uh, that's the infant or that's the latest in education delivery. And I think we're trying to bring that into the activities of the college. Uh. Our lectures are going to still be virtual and it's still going to be the way we held it last year. I E lectures will commence, clinics are supposed to hold from morning from eight AM to one PM. Lectures commence from one to six PM, but they traditionally left open from six till nine PM. So if anybody for any reason misses a lecture or needs some extra time, you can key into that time. The portal, sorry, the uh, the platform should be open till nine PM and then, so you can still uh catch on it. I've talked about the seminars, the monthly seminar, I've talked about clinics, minimum of sixteen weeks, I've talked about the October residency. And then I've talked about the monthly seminars as well. I've talked also about the special clinics. I said there is a Google class attached to the learning management system. And we are all going to share that. So on Monday, medicine department faculty use it. Tuesday is for pathology, Wednesday is for public health, Thursday is going to be for surgery. So the head of faculty will decide which of the study centers will now host that week. And then there will be expected to share something unique to themselves. With the rest of the students or the rest of the residents in that particular faculty. If anywhere along the line, however, uh, we have specialties. Then what that meant automatically is that every other thing will be suspended. And students in that particular faculty would have an example is, assuming there's a special surgical procedure to be done. What we'll do is that surgery will take over that class and then share that information. All the diagnoses, the management and everything that we're going to do on that class. It's a video class. So everybody can see what has been done. So you need not be in Zaria to participate in any special case that comes to Zaria. You need not be at the Baden to participate in any special case that comes to the Baden. We are going to make it in such a way that whether we are in Nigeria or outside Nigeria. And for our students that are outside Nigeria, we can also share cases. So if they have special cases or special diagnostic uh equipment to use. They can share it with us on that same platform. So that platform is to increase the clinical exposure or the practical uh skill acquisition of our residents. So uh, well, we already have produced a twenty twenty-four calendar and I think that has been hosted already. Uh, we're still going to host it again. Uh, the key information or activities that we're going to have in twenty twenty-four are clearly spelled out in the calendar. Uh, let me just say one or two things. The key officers you will also be dealing with are the provost and myself, the deans. Now the heads of faculties. In the acting, sorry, in the proposed college bill. Uh, it has now looked at it more like an institution than uh a setup. So the heads of faculties are now going to be referred to as deans. Uh, the program coordinators or option coordinators are going to refer to as heads of departments. And so you are going to be interacting with them. Then we have seminar coordinators, web clinic coordinators and. Just to perform the role of coordinating these various activities. Then we also have study center supervisors. So at the level of the study centers, each faculty that is approved for that study center. Will have somebody coordinating its activities because clinical training takes place at the level of the study centers. Lectures are centralized, but clinical training takes place at the level of the study centers. So we're going to have supervisors who are in charge of that, of that. The VTH directors or the directors of the veterinary teaching hospitals are the chairpersons of the college committee in that study center. So the director of the VTH with the various study center uh supervisors now constitute the college committee at that level. The VTH director is the chairman. So collectively, they ensure that students are the residents.
Okay, so I think we have a minor interruption again, but uh. This shouldn't take long to resolve. I suspect that because he's using his phone, uh, we could have uh. A cause coming in that we need to quickly attend to. So I, I, I think I, I was seeing some comments on our chat. Uh, and then the secretary is already answering some of the questions like uh. The link to the registration has been shared. I've jotted a couple of questions to that Proff will be attending to. Uh, so we could get up immediately. He comes on board once he finishes. Uh, you can also raise your hand. I see three people raising their hands. I will call you immediately that when he is done. So the secretary has shared the link to the uh regis- for, for the registration. Uh, I also get to be asked as the twenty twenty-four academic session began. Uh, Doctor Fadipe, you want to quickly say something around that? As the twenty twenty-four uh session began, somebody asked that. I think you can easily help us answer that. Uh, before Professor Hassan comes back up. Uh, Doctor Fadipe.
Oh, okay. No, the, the, the session has not begun yet. The application uh, that was released, sorry, the admission. Application that was released will be closing by the end of this month.
Uh, end of this month? That's February.
Yeah. Uh, February, yes.
After February, there will not be an extension again.
Well, I know they have done the first extension, but the provost is in the best wish to see whether there will be an extension or not.
Alright, so another question. How can one choose uh his or a study center?
Okay, I, I know we, we have four study centers before. That's ABU, UNN, UI and MVRI. But we are also uh bringing on board three more study centers. That's Meduguri, Sokoto and Abuja. So it is for whoever is applying to choose any of those study centers. Hello? Hello?
Alright.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, Croft.
We just. Sorry, I had to revert, I had to revert to using my phone. And then a call came through. That's the problem with using a phone.
Yeah.
When a call comes, it disrupts everything. Uh, sorry for the breaches and everything. I, I think I'll just cut off uh the presentations and just we'll go straight to the questions. I think I've taken enough time. And uh, probably I think we'll just go straight to the question and answers, if that's okay by you, Doctor Fermin.
Uh, so we, we are, uh, we, we, okay, so we'll just take that. Uh, we could just take the question and answer. Uh, so uh, somebody asked for your registration link. The secretary has done that. And by the way, congratulations, Proff. Uh, we have well over two hundred people on this call. It means uh, people are interested in what you are doing and uh. I think that's a very good sign of your leadership. Uh, somebody said, how can he choose his or a study center?
Uh, it's a pretty straightforward thing. Once you get to the portal, there is that option for you to choose. So it's a straightforward process. The first thing is, as I said, we're going to advertise the link to the portal. Once you get on the portal, you click on it, you will see the options. So it's a straightforward process. Once you get on, so that's the first thing you do. Get on the portal and then you see all those options of what to do. Choice of your study center, choice of your faculty, choice of your specialization. It's all there.
Alright, so uh.
On the portal, you'll be able to get that.
Everything can be resolved on the portal. Uh, someone was asking for the contact number for the college. Uh, the secretary has also shared that contact. Somebody.
Okay, let me just add this. Let, yeah, let me just add this. Uh, in addition to that, knowing very well that we're starting and there are bound to be challenges. Uh, the consultants who are working with have set up, you know, an IT support, uh, WhatsApp group. So if you are there and you try to register and you have any challenge. it's also been advertised. Just go in there, also join that group and you'll have answers. So.
If you can share the link to the WhatsApp group, I think that will be a brilliant thing. So that people know what to do or if there's a specific number that they can quickly call to get that through, I think that will be it.
Yeah, the secretary, the secretary has that and I I will instruct the secretary to share it.
Please, if secretary, if you can share it on the group, that would be a brilliant thing. Uh somebody said, some of us are wait admission with dialogue still showing not yet admitted. We we do hope to be admitted or shown the reason for rejection if not admitted. Also, what are the possible reasons for being rejected uh at the college?
Well, I I think, well, I think the the key thing is that uh probably uh let me see, our level of I T savviness is it's it's a little bit different. Uh some of the heads of heads of faculties are a little bit slow uh on the admission process, otherwise uh the I T consultants are taking the patience to have a meeting with them and communicated. Because they have everything, everything is now with them. And I remember this morning, I just sent a reminder to all the heads of faculties that there are pending admission issues. That they should please do it before the end of the day. And you see, the system is built in such a way that where you are not admissible into that particular faculty. The head of that faculty can recommend based on your certificates where you ought to be. Once he clicks on that recommendation, you will automatically appear on the page of the head of the faculty that he has recommended you to. So everything flows within the system. So I think that delay is actually at the levels of the heads of faculties. I hope my heads of faculties are here and I will plead with them that please, they should not be responsible for the delay. As I M C members, we should not be seen to be responsible for any delay whatsoever. So please, heads of faculties, expedite action on the admission process.
All right. So that's the acting provo saying that you will all be admitted today. So that's a measure of good news. Uh somebody said you should share the calendar for twenty twenty four. I knew you shared that with me earlier. Uh so I will just figure out the way of putting that in the link and then sharing to everybody. Somebody's asking, I'm changing from public health to epidemiology. Do I still need to pay an application fee as returning to them?
No, 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 you're not. I I don't understand. If you have gone far on a particular list and you are trying to change now, it might be a little bit difficult really, because I don't know how far you've gone here to study. Because if you've already taken lectures and other things uh in another specialty and you're thinking of switching over to another one. Uh but okay, maybe you would public health because we're just introducing those specializations now. Uh you think what you need to do is that you just go back there to your form and there's an option that allows you to change your choice of option or specialty. So where you made the choice, just go back there on the portal system. There's a provision that allows you to change. If you need to change. So just go back to the portal system.
All right. So if you have any difficulty, of course, you can call the number that will be shared shortly. I have my mask on public health. Can I use it to seek residency in medicine? That's Dr. Anasim asking.
No, sir. You can do it for public health. If you are going into medicine, then you will have to start with the fellowship one program.
All right. Is you, Dr. Babalola said, is UniJos not a study center?
It shares the study center ship with N V R I one because of their geographic, you know, proximity. There is no point running a program in one, running it in N V R I, uh sorry, in the University of Jol. So what we did was one still handles the diagnostic component, whereas UniJos now deals with the practice-based component.
All right. So so I I think that that's a very straightforward answer. I had somebody's asking, can vets in Dersbera participate in the college program? How easy would that be?
Yes, we can.
Receive that question quite a handful of time.
Yeah, they can. We've developed the system with that in mind. And actually, at the level we are, uh since our lectures are virtual, they can participate in the lectures, they can go do the application and everything else. By next year, we'll start charging dollars, of course, especially now that the dollar is hovering around one eight. Uh I think we'll start charging them in dollars. But essentially, you can participate in those lectures. However, when it comes to clinics, uh depending on whether you are in a practice-based or in a diagnostic company. If you happen to be lecturing pathology or in public health that is not practice-based. And you are working in a laboratory where not just a research lab, but a diagnostic lab where cases results or samples from cases come in. And then you have somebody in that country who is a diplomat or a fellow or whatever the equivalent. Who is willing to be your mentor? Yes, you can. If however, you want to be in a practice-based area, that is medicine and surgery, then you must have a license to practice in that country where you are domiciled. Because if you don't have a license to practice, it simply means you can't practice in that country. So you will not receive the kind of exposure that we want you to receive. But if you are licensed to practice in that country, you have access to at least eighteen hours every week in clinical practice and there is a practitioner over there who is qualified and willing to serve as your mentor. Yes, you can do it.
All right. So for those of us raising our hands, I'm going to call us, but I'll have to finish the question from the chat. Dr. Daniel and Neuro said, what's the fate of those who wish to specialize in animal production?
Well, incidentally, animal production is uh strictly speaking, I I think it's it's one of the things that uh yeah, I wouldn't want to go. Institute of Animal Science or something is into something similar. And I think we probably should avoid starting conflicts.
All right. So that's it. People returning students are also on this call. Hello, Prof. Hello, Prof. Returning students are also on this call.
Institute of Animal Science. It's one of the things they intend to do or they are doing. The moment.
Eh, Prof, you might need to reshare that answer because we are breaking. I also could not hear.
We shouldn't uh production, say, uh yeah, it's either here, yeah, it's animal science. Or two additional, you know, specializations will come aboard. If you notice, two specializations have come aboard in public health. Uh this time around, by next year, we expect that as long as there is a demand for it, as long as there's a demand for it, we, our job will be to meet up with what the market wants. So if there are individuals, you know, wanting a particular specialization, we develop it. As long as it's key within, because another thing we also need to look at is do such specialization exist in similar colleges in other parts of the world? Because if you do not have production, animal production within the veterinary fellowship or diploma program in other parts of the world, I don't think it's proper for us to venture into that.
All right. Thank you so much, Prof. Good afternoon. I'm a returning student for this twenty twenty four session. I'm at A B U's area study center. I did my clinical training last year at A B U's area. Now Meduguri is a study center. I want to retain my study center at Zara. When I want to do my clinical training this time around at Meduguri, not Zara. Is that possible?
Meduguri is an approved clinical training center. So I'm being an approved clinical training center, yes. You can choose to do your clinical training there. But when it comes to the October residency, you must be in Zaria.
All right. So we've heard that. Uh I had a few years back about the possibility of lecturers without PhD. But with several years of engagement to become a professor to college. So can you become a professor through the college program? I don't know how relevant this is.
Well, I think that's a controversial thing. Uh different universities actually have different, you know, guidelines on their promotion guide. So the senators of the various universities are responsible for shaping promotion guidelines. Uh in the Amad Bello University's area, uh without a PhD, a fellowship allows you to become or to rise up to the level of being a senior lecturer. Uh a few years back, the University of Ibadan uh allows you to rise up to become a professor with a fellowship, even if you do not have a PhD. Uh but I think that has been discontinued.
Okay, somebody said, now that the Faculty of Public Health and Preventive Medicine has been split into four areas of special specialties. Does this affect the placement of those of us who are in fellowship to go into for uh year four?
I think, yes, it does. But what we did was, was such specificities will leave it to the heads of the faculty. So just directly be in touch with your head of faculty and discuss the uniqueness of your case.
All right. Yes, it is possible. Yeah. So so you you contact the number there if you have any issue doing that. Somebody is saying that uh that he's working, what's the fate of fellows who are working with non-vet in a non-vet uh arena and are not giving financial benefits. He's asking if you can write memo to those places to pay them. Uh since he has uh, he's requesting if you can write a memo for payment.
Well, I think that's within the ambit of the Veterinary Council, not the college really. The college is an institution that offers training and graduates you. Once you've graduated, the college has done its job. Regulating practice and some of those things around, you know, the life, our lives as practitioners, I think it's within the ambit of the Veterinary Council of Nigeria. And I think both the director and probably the president are on and they are listening.
Yep, yep.
So I think it's uh they are in a better position and would you, Fermi, as a member of council, I think you people are in a better position to do this, not us.
Sir, let's let's allow the president handle that, sir. So somebody said, I was, I so I didn't understand the English properly, but he said he was about to graduate in twenty eighteen, just before the suspension of the program in twenty nineteen. Uh but because he had a receipt, he did not receive the exam. When uh but he's trying to find out if he wants to come back to write the receipt, can he, how can he go about it?
Uh well, if you want to come back and write the receipt, first at least apply because it's 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 considered as if you have abandoned the program really. Uh because we have completed a full session after resumption of college activities and if he has not turned up, uh it's assumed that he has actually abandoned the program. So if you want to be reinstated as a student, I think you put in an application uh through your head of faculty to the provost indicating uh stating the circumstance and what your prayers are. And the I M C will now look at your prayers and if approved, you'll be so communicated. But you will be expected, uh if there are still, if you have any outstanding fee, as well as the fee for last academic session, you will have to offset all those fees. Because to be considered a student, uh it's simply meant that you you'll be expected to write off, you know, fees of those years that uh we are now trying to bridge. But yes, it can be done, but you now have to write, having abandoned the program, you now have to write that you want to uh come back onto the program.
Fantastic. Uh somebody is saying that our residents still going to have detailed result of their courses with grade release as opposed to the past grade that was released.
No, that, you see, the past grade released was for general consumption. Transcripts are what will carry the details of your scores. Yeah, you want your transcript. Usually, you make a request for a transcript. Transcripts are not just automatically given. You make a request that you want a transcript and then we'll process that transcript, our compayment of a fee and make it available to you. So your transcript will now capture those details. But for the purpose of releasing results that are in the general per view for everybody to see, it's usually a pass or fail for.
And I think that's that's a fair thing to have. Somebody is trying to contest why exams are not written at the comfort of their homes. Uh instead of uh coming together. Uh he was saying that maybe his, the questions are usually defined, explained that why can't we have applied questions that conform to adult education standards?
Well, first and foremost, why he cannot have it uh written in his bedroom is that we don't trust him. Even when we had the exams in Abuja, quite a number of you are familiar that on day one, we made an assumption that all vets are sufficiently matured that they will not participate in certain practices. Unfortunately, we had the unfortunate situation of quite a number of people coming with their phones, surfing the net, being on the internet and doing a lot of things that were regrettable. So if being in Abuja in an examination hall, you could still do that, what is going to happen if you are in your bedroom? Unfortunately, the students are students and from our experience, we don't think we can trust. However, I, as I said, because of the disruptions, I wasn't able to finish my presentation. The examination system this year is going to change. The theoretical examinations are all going to be C B T based. All theoretical exams are going to be C B T based. And clinic exams are the only ones that are going to be practical based. And for the practical-based examinations, even that will not require that you all have to aggregate in one location. What it meant is that if you are in A B U's area, uh we probably will have one of your assessors in Ibadan, another one at Unzuka. So when you are asked a question, you are going to address it or let me say you are going to demonstrate it on camera. So the man in Ibadan is seeing you, the man at Unzuka is seeing you and everybody is going to grade you based on that. So it's going to be a very objective process and it's going to be a rigorous one. But we are saying, you are going to write your exams in your chosen study centers. But the exams are going to be centralized technically. Because everybody will be there to see and participate. So all your instructors will be there to see you, to assess you. Yeah. So exams are going to be C B T based henceforth. All your, all health courses are going to be C B T based.
All right. So and that's a fair answer, Prof. Uh we, I think I shared the advert of this college training on our Facebook group. I just remembered that on the Facebook group, there are other people who are not vets but are animal scientists and I think I saw a few questions regarding that, asking if they can be part of the college. I know the clear answer is no, but I think they want to hear from you.
Well, just as a non-med, would not be part of the fellowship trading uh for the medical program. This is strictly for veterinary doctors.
Doctor, all right. So I I guess as much, but maybe in my subsequent advert, I will restrict it to just our group. Uh so but this College of Veterinary Surgeons Nigeria is strictly for veterinarians. Since a master degree holder can apply and start from year three in the uh college, can a fellow without masters be allowed to apply for a PhD program in the same specialty of his fellow program? I I didn't quite get this. I don't know if you got that, but.
I I think we shouldn't mix up these two things. Masters and PhDs are within the ambit of the senators of those universities. The fellowship program is within the ambit of the College of Vet Surgeons Nigeria. These are two different things. We have not integrated our activities with that of the universities. It is hoped that over time, we might get to that level where our postgraduate lectures and college lectures might be integrated. There is an attempt to do something similar to that in the human medical sphere. Who have been doing the fellowship program without masters and PhDs? Now that uh there is an insistence on having masters and PhDs, they are looking at ways of integrating the lecture so that you don't have to offer a lecture as a master's or PhD student and then come to offer the same lecture again as a fellowship student. Okay? So that we'll find a way because teaching at the postgraduate level, irrespective of what you call it, it's about the same content you are giving out. So is it necessarily really to duplicate these efforts? So we are looking at ways and means on which we can harmonize this. We'll probably just look at your transcript. Over time, we might decide to simply request that where students had offered these courses, let's say within the preceding, we'll give a certain number of years. Beyond those number of years, your information might be still. So we might give within, let's say about three years or thereabout. If you have offered this course within this number of years, you can apply for a waiver. And then we can now look at your transcript. If you have offered that course and the content uh are similar to the content of what the college teaches, then we may decide to waive it and use your grades, which are in your transcript to substitute, you know, your grades for the course. Because as I, I I believe that there's no point in you offering that same course as a PhD student and then offering the sitting in the class to offer the same course again. Yes, but we've not gotten there. But ultimately, you do that, yeah.
Let me take people who are raising up their hands briefly. So you want to keep your question as brief as possible uh so that we can pick past much as possible. Uh so, uh Dr. Afif P. You're raising up your hands. You've been unmuted.
Yes, thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Prof.
How are you?
Good mind.
Fine, sir. I'm very delighted as to how we have had changes in the college and so many things I knew. But my worry is that this college seems not to be flexible, like does not appreciate transfer. Even in universities, developed countries, people change universities and they can apply for a transfer and move with their details. So I'm a bit worried that we cannot apply to transfer our study centers. Please, I want to know the reasons why because the insecurity and the reasons you gave for creating more centers, they still exist with us. And some of us, our institutions don't even allow that October holiday because the session is writing exams and we need to be there to mark. So I'm a bit worried, sir, and we're pleading that your college should allow us to write a prayer for study center transfer. Thank you.
Well, I think it is, these are decisions that are central. Well, I think it is, these are decisions that are centralized decisions. At the last senate meeting, this particular issue came up. And the decision at the end of the senate is that no, for those students who are already on the program. And they already have their study centers, they have to complete at those study centers. This is not a decision of the IMC or the provost. It was a decision of the senate and the senate comprises of almost sixty of us that collectively. Uh took that decision. So I don't think it's something that I will be able to change. Uh suffice to say that if you've already started on the program, uh and you are already on it. I think it's just for one year that you will have to participate in that uh October residency. So please make arrangements to be able to do that.
Alright, thank you so much, Dr. Edjo Woke. Uh so you've been unmuted. If you can turn on your video so that we can see you and we can have you spotlighted. Go ahead.
Okay, um good afternoon, good afternoon, Prof. Thank you for the presentation. And last year I applied. As I speak, I'm not sure where my status is.
Uh you applied in the twenty twenty-three academic session?
It was like a courage, uh, I was coming, can you hear me now?
Yeah, you can hear me now.
Did you apply in the twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four academic session?
Twenty twenty-three academic session, when I didn't hear anything from the college around June, May-June, I contacted them. And I was sent through a labyrinth, fine process of call this person, contact that person. At the end of the day, somebody threw three videos at me, through YouTube videos. And I asked the person, what am I meant to do with this video? He said, just listen to it, then further instructions will come. I'm still waiting for further instructions. Am I a student or not? I I'm not sure of what I am.
Uh madam, if you registered in the twenty twenty-three academic session. I think that's lost. I will, I will advise that you pick a form and apply for admission in the twenty twenty-four academic session.
Okay, so now, when I apply, how do I know that I'm, you, what's the practice of the college? If a student is not admitted, are you um given, are you contacted? Sorry, you were not eligible for admission. So the student knows that there's closure. Whether you want to apply the following year or you just leave them in limbo, you contact those that have been admitted and.
With with the new system now in place, that is the portal system. It's built into the system that if you are not eligible for admission. As I said, you could be recommended to another faculty, in which case you will appear in that other faculty. If there's any other reason why you can't be admitted into any of the faculties, the system will auto generate a response to you. On why you cannot be admitted. So you are going to get that on your email. But as I said, last year, we, the portal was not used last year. So last year, it was still the manual process of having to go and collect a form, fill the form, somebody transfers the forms with the form to Abuja. Now, I didn't even know whether your forms go to Abuja or not and things like that. There were so many issues with the manual system. And a lot of forms never get their way back to Abuja. So when the uh the admissions committee will be meeting, it's possible that your forms are not even there yet. So but this time around, because we are on the portal system. It's not likely that anything will get missed.
So I I I I think, Doc, you want to pick the contact and then please, did you make payment? Maybe that's the first question I want to ask you when you applied last year.
I was given a list of things to pay for, which I did. They kept on asking me, do you have the receipt for this? And I'll flip the receipt out and that conversation will just end there. It was, it was part of a.
Dog, please, can you just send an email detailing all of these to the college official email address? CVSN Abuja at gmail dot com. Send an email detailing these challenges and problems so that we can take a look at it.
Okay, so. I think we have a new administration, you should receive better response uh now.
Please do that. Uh please, what faculty, what faculty did you apply to? What faculty was that?
Um initially, I wanted um microbiology because I do have a masters there. But I found that that my interest was actually in clinic, so I was willing to, you know, change to clinic. So I actually, my application was actually to uh medicine.
Uh your masters is in microbiology and you applied to medicine.
Yes.
Definitely, they will not give you an admission.
But I was willing to start from scratch.
Oh, okay. So that's why I said, just detail, detail the, uh just send in the email so that we treat it formally, yeah.
Okay, what's the email address again, sir?
It will be put on the chat so that I can copy that.
Okay, alright, alright.
Send it on the official email so that we treat it officially.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry about, sorry about the inconvenience then, yeah, but I guarantee you that it's, we're going to address it.
Okay, sir, thank you, sir.
Dr. Umar Bello, quickly, uh I've asked you to mute yourself, uh in fifteen minutes, we'll run it up so that we can.
Okay, tha- thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Prof, for this wonderful uh inspiring presentation, sir. My my mind is also a complaint, sir. Uh I I personally uh choose to specialize in aquatic medicine. Uh and then looking at the nature of what we have done last year. You may have to, af- apart from the fact that we are given an option to choose.
So I I think your network is slightly poor. Doctor Bello, your network is poor, so I might have to just mute you and then take other questions. Apologies.
Let me do one or two things. I think I get the flow of his own presentation. Uh we seem to have some challenge with that particular specialization. Uh because we'll try to bundle so many things into one. We have aquatic, we have wildlife.
Legal uh training that's to either small animal or large animal, easy.
So you can go ahead. Yeah, as I said, what we are thinking of doing is unbundling that particular specialization. Because aquatics, fishery and other things is a completely different thing, that are individuals who want to go into wildlife. Okay, these are the two key things and then we have the laboratory animal medicine. So we've realized that bringing all of this together, actually, it's 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 it's. Uh defeats the essence of, if the fellowship trading is supposed to be narrow, having you narrowed down on a particular area. And become an expert in that particular area rather than, you know, uh muddling up so many things together. So that particular option is likely to be unbundled. So that aquatic medicine will be on its own. Those who want to go into fisheries, aquatics and other things will, and then wildlife will be on its own again. And you can have all those who want to be in wildlife and some of these things to be there. So we're going to unbundle it, but I, unfortunately, I think you had some issues with the audio, so it wasn't too clear. But my advice is, since you said your case is a complaint, please, let's treat it the way we did the previous presentation. Send an email detailing what these challenges are so that we can address it formally.
Alright, so I, I'm just going to ask you three more questions, then we'll call it a day. If you have further questions, you have the official email address of the college and you have a contact number. How do returning students get access to the portal system for fees, registrations and lectures?
The portal is not for lectures really. Uh the portal is simply for application, registration fee, payment and things like that. Once you get onto the uh portal address, there is a menu that will ask you whether you're a returning student or a new uh applicant. When you click on returning students, there are options on what you need to do as a returning student. The fees you have to pay, et cetera, et cetera, because as a returning student, we do not expect you to pay for any application fee. You simply go straight to payment of your school fee. Now, another thing that the portal system does is that. If you don't pay your school fee, unlike the previous uh situation where we keep chasing and begging people to pay fee. If you do not pay your fee this time around, it will not migrate you to the LMS. And if you are not on the LMS, the implication is that you can't access the E-library. You will not be able to print out an examination slip. And if you don't have an examination slip, you cannot participate in any of our examinations. So we are not likely to be chasing you all over the place and begging you to pay your school fee. If you don't pay your school fee, the system will block you. Mind you, mind you, the college only survives on these fee that you pay. And when people don't pay, it becomes a problem for us. We can't pay your instructors, we can't give the little stipend we send to study centers for your October residency. And so many other things.
Uh thank you so much, Prof. Two more questions. Please, how many years is the program for those of us with PhD? I intend to do pharmacology and toxicology, but I already have a PhD in biochemistry.
Pharmacology and toxicology?
Yeah.
Uh. Well, I think you need to directly, you know, less with your head of faculty to see if, in the opinion of that faculty. Because your qualification is not directly exactly what we have. Ordinarily, I will have, I don't want to sound pessimistic, uh but I will have told you that it's not likely that you will secure an admission. But, well, because what we have is, we have the pharmacology and toxicology, uh so. I think it's better you contact the head of medicine, uh who incidentally also comes from that particular department. I think they will be able to treat your case on its merits. There are certain unique cases that I wouldn't want to say yes or no. It's better you contact the faculty and the head of that faculty can now look at the specifics, look at your certificates, look at probably the subjects you have even offered. If they are in tandem with what they expect to be offered in the Part One Fellowship, then they will approve you for an admission. But I think it's the general rule is that your postgraduate qualification should be in the same field. That you want to do the fellowship program in. That's the general rule. When there's an exception, I think it's safer you contact the faculty so that the faculty can now look at the uniqueness of your case.
So that works, uh Prof, we're just really scaling the uh down on time, uh but. Uh the registrar, the registrar of the council is also here. Before your final words, I want the acting registrar to say something. Will you want to drop a a word on this conversation? For those of us who might not have had most of our questions answered. Uh while the registrar is talking before the provost says his concluding words. We will drop the email again and the phone number you can reach directly regarding uh this subject matter. I still see a few people raising their hands. Uh we needed to wrap this up exactly three thirty so that uh we can stay within the confines of time. We just have eight more minutes to three thirty. Uh so please, uh Dr. Fadipe, you want to quickly unmute yourself and add your voice to this conversation? Alright, Dr. Fadipe, okay, I think it's not on board. Prof, we still have two people raising up their hands.
Okay, fine, fine, fine. I'm I'm available.
Yeah. Yep, and then I think I see a few questions. Uh strange, strange colleague. Okay, that college was shut down for three years. We are all aware of that and not a word from the center on what happened. Uh people career were on good. So on behalf of the council, we want to apologize for that. Quite a handful of things happened within that period, but we are happy that it's back on board now. Prof, you want to say something regarding that?
I think you've said it all.
Yeah, yeah.
There were certain things that happened. The Vietnam Council took that decision. Uh mind you, the college was not in place or the IMC wasn't in place at that material time. Neither was it part of that decision. So I think it's a council matter, the council affair, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm I'm very much.
Yeah, the apologies, uh sorry about uh the disruptions that that might have caused.
Alright, let's get a few final words from you, Prof. Uh over two hundred people joined this meeting that. Uh and then we're still running over two hundred. Uh what will be, what, what, if they need to find you, how can they find you? If they need to find the college, how can they find the college? You mentioned something around the WhatsApp group for technical issues. How can they get on those WhatsApp group? How can we keep the conversation going? Meanwhile, before Prof comes in, the recordings of this will be provided to Prof. And then it will be shared on all vet group, just in case you want to go over. Uh or you have colleagues that were not part of this and want to listen to what Prof has said and also hear his response. It will be available shortly after this meeting. Prof, over to you, sir.
Well, I think uh most of the issues have been raised, unfortunately, there are, my my component of the presentation wasn't too, too, too good. The the interruptions were such that I wasn't able to. And there are quite a number of, as you said, questions that are yet to be raised. What we intend to do is that uh. On the website, we are now going to upload virtually all the possible contacts you would need. The contact to the provost will be there, my phone numbers, my WhatsApp number, my email address will be there, that of all the deans will be there. For each of these colleges, we are also going to have the heads of that faculty or the dean, the heads of departments, all these coordinators that I spoke about. The supervisors at the levels of the study centers, et cetera. Their contacts are all going to be there. Their email addresses, their phone numbers are all going to be there. By tomorrow, we are also going to circulate the revised handbook. That information is also contained in the handbook. But mind you, we are not circulating physical handbooks. Nobody does that kind of thing anymore. These are electronic handbooks. As far as I'm concerned, we are not, we are going to be powerless, really. So these electronic handbooks are going to be made available. They are going to be on all the faculty sites. They are going to be on the faculty, uh sorry, the Fellowship College of Vet Surgeons site, they are going to be on the VCN site. And so on every veterinary, possible veterinary site, and then we are also going to employ. That our colleagues in the various faculties also put it on their faculty sites. So that we can give it the widest possible publicity. It contains virtually every information that you would need. The handbooks contain every information you will need. We broke it down faculty by faculty basis. You will see the skills you are supposed to learn, you are going to see every guideline about the project, you are going to see the courses, you are going to. All the key officers that are going to work with you, you are going to see everything. Every piece of information is in the handbook. And by tomorrow, the handbook, electronic copies of the handbook will be available. So this information will be on the website and it's also going to be on the handbook. So you can contact us any day, anytime, feel free to do that. Uh we're there to serve you. And the more we are able to get individuals to come on board, to understand exactly what's going on in the college, I think the better of we are.
Alright, so I I think it's been a full day. Uh we want to thank you, Professor Hassan, uh for being this revolutionary. Uh just as Prof has mentioned, all your answers will be found at the portal. So whatever it is that you want to make inquiry about, go to the portal, if you can find it, send an email directly. To the official uh email address of the college and then contacts too are shared. You could also use those contacts. Uh in the past, and I'm also aware of that, there could be issues here and there around the college. But we have a lot more vibrant uh team now staring the college. And I think you all will have a wonderful ride this time around. I want to thank everyone of us. We had over two hundred and fifty join and that's a very good sign that you're all interested. In continuing or uh making your career very progressive. The council is very happy with that. And on behalf of the registrar, the acting registrar and the president of the council. I want to thank everyone of us for sparing time to join. Most importantly, to also thank Professor Hassan. Uh for sparing us and our ten minutes of his schedule uh to engage in this town hall meeting. And I will see every one of us at the college. Thank you and good afternoon.
Thank you. Bye, all.